Perry Mason is sitting in for Ms. Beverly Keon. Call the roll, please.
Michael Solomon?
Yes.
Ted Marleau?
Here.
Brad Spurlock?
Here.
Steve Williams?
Here.
Wood Grant?
Here.
Marty Ray?
Here.
Murray Housman?
Here.
Darren Brown?
Here.
We have all present, so we do have a quorum with that. We'll ask you to give consideration or approval of amendments for October 3rd. Are there any comments, questions in regard to those amendments? Hearing done then, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, with that, the minutes are approved. Next will be our public forum, but before we do so, you know, sometimes come seldom. And I think this is the third, to my knowledge, that the time has come. And with that, I wanted to ask Ms. Edna Barker if she would come up here. And I have a plaque of recognition for her 20 years of service to the city of Lowell. And we conned her into coming looking at video equipment tonight in order to get her here. The First Lady apologizes tremendously she couldn't be here to enjoy this with you, but just want to read, "In recognition for your dedication and loyalty, the citizens, mayor, and employees wish to thank you for your years of service to the city of Lowell." Congratulations, and we thank you so very much. Thank you so very much. And with that, if you're here to speak in the public forum, we've asked you to sign in. To do so, as I make my way around to the council chamber, if someone would please come up, state your name for the record, and then I'll grab the sheet and we'll start on number two.
Guys, you make it 3:15, Senator Drive. I've got two things I want to cover. I want to address first one to Tom. It's an illegal, Tom, under false advertising, advertise, reelect when you have never been elected to a position. Number two, I'm on the City Minutes again. I've been reading the City Minutes, and one of the City Minutes says that Mr. Keelak made a motion. Now, the city attorney cannot make a motion come hell or high water. So that's wrong. If you read the Minutes, it goes for roll call, it starts off with Solomon, and around next month, Solomon around. That's not the way she calls roll call. She might start off with Solomon, next time with Darren Brown, and works around. These Minutes need to be accurate, one way or the other, and they need to show what the speakers are talking about when they come up and speak. Now, I don't know who gives the instructions that these are not to be in the Minutes, but if somebody wanted to sue the mayor or the city, how would Tom find out if it was legal? Thank you, Tom.
Yeah, I'm in the Minutes, just making a motion.
Yes, sir.
I move that Epi Stricken.
(laughing).
No, not this time.
We're going to award you the quote of the day, Mr. Keelak. Okay, I don't have a signing sheet in front of me, so if there's someone else, please come on up and let's expedite that.
My name's Ronnie Breland, I live at 119 South Brandon. Mayor and council members, as the citizens of Lowell, I'd like to address my question to Michael Solomon concerning the lawsuit down at Southport. As a citizen, I'd like to know how that's coming out, being you and Eric Shine asked the city to participate in it, and the city said they'd back you up if needed for that POA lawsuit. They was going to file it to begin with, but then vetoed it, according to what the mayor had said. So, as a citizen, I'd like to know how that lawsuit's coming, or if it's over, what was the court's findings and rulings? And as a citizen, I feel I should know in case we have to budget for that lawsuit. But secondly, if anybody wants to put a sign in my yard, you're more than welcome to.
Next, we have, must've been Marie Housman, is that correct?
My name is Murray Housman. I reside at 206 Franklin Avenue in Lowell, and I am a member of the city council. Members of the council, city clerk, members of the fourth estate, and the city attorney. On three different occasions, I have requested items to be placed on the city council agenda. I understand that the city clerk treasurer is responsible for preparing the council packets and the agenda. Since the clerk is not usually present in city hall, I have given my requests to the mayor or secretarial staff. These requests have not been placed on the council agenda. I do not know, or wish to pinpoint, who is not following through with these requests. But I have never received any communication by phone, by email, by letter, or in person why the staff, mayor, or clerk has not complied. I do not wish to point out, I mean, I do wish to point out, that this is a city council meeting, not a meeting of the city clerk, not a meeting of the mayor, and not a meeting of the city employees. Mr. City Attorney, is this considered malfeasance?
You asked to reveal this, I mean, is anyone not familiar?
That is correct.
But I feel I've observed of y'all in the way you conduct your business, if you guys want to add them to the agenda, you have done so by motion here. Have you not?
We have the privilege of bringing items to the city hall and asking them to be put on the agenda. Mine have not been, ever. I suspicion other people's request, I don't know, I haven't asked each one of you whether you have been denied, or whether you have even asked. All I know is that I have been denied.
Our two minutes are up there, Ms. Solomon.
I will finish this, sir. I do wish this item to be corrected.
I'm going to talk over you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to respond to one because it was a recent incident. In fact, it was requested that tonight, that the sign issue involving the Tucker School be on tonight's agenda. Code enforcement interpreted a portion of the ordinance that the sign did not meet the ordinance of the color, which is a red color. They also said it was a flashing sign, and it did not meet the ordinances for flashing signs, which I agree to that. I had some question over the color, because our ordinance does not say red, it does not say green, it does not say amber. It just says if the color could cause it to be confused with a signal sign, et cetera. We believe that the appropriate place to take that was to the planning commission, which we did last night. Mrs. Housman walked into the office, I believe it was Wednesday or Thursday of last week, demanding it be on tonight's agenda, which I in turn called the PTO president, and the past PTO president of Tucker School. Explained to them that the process, whether it be PTO of Tucker School, whether it be JB Hunt Corporation, whether it be any one of you sitting in the audience that would ask that request, it would go through the same process. It did not come to the city council to be waived and exempted from any of the rules and regulations first, it should go to the planning commission, which I did. So that's one of the reasons, and I believe all the other items are similar type items. So with that, that is just a simple response to that. And we're not into a public forum and a debate here, but responding to her. So with that, we move on to next.
My comment in rebuttal would be, Mr. Mayor, did you have laryngitis? And did you break all your fingers? And could not dial my phone?
You're out of order.
No, I'm not.
Thank you. You're out of order. Mr. Housman.
If I'm out of order, you are also out of order.
Sir, please, please come up and state your name for the record.
Mr. Mayor, I yield my time to my wife to finish her comments.
You have nothing to say, sir?
I said, "I yield my time to my wife." My time is two minutes, whether I'm saying something, or I'm standing here looking at you in the eye. She has my time, my two minutes, if she cares to use it.
I'm starting to time her, so with an exception to that, I will not argue that. So, three minutes still remaining, or a minute and 40 seconds.
Okay, my only comment was, did you have laryngitis? Did you have broken fingers that you could not dial me on the phone?
Perhaps.
And verse with me on this problem?
There's a minute and 20 seconds left.
Courtesy demands a reply.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to address the council on item two in new business, resolution authorizing the continued levy of ad valorem taxes on real estate and personal property. In looking at that, in my wife's packet, I noticed that we have some on there for the police department pension fund, among other things. We now have a full-time paid fire department. I have not heard anybody in the city say, "What are we going to do for to fund our firefighter pension fund?" I think they should receive the same consideration as members of the police service.
With that, I think that's the last one. If we have overlooked you, or you're not familiar with our process, we give the opportunity to address myself and the council at this time, did anyone like to do so? With that, yes, sir, Mr. Wright?
I'm researching regarding this minutes issue that we have continually coming up. So I have a statement, a brief statement that I'll read in rebuttal to that. And this is according to Roberts Rules of Order Newly Revised, 10th Edition, page 451, 454. The minutes of a meeting should contain the following items, and I paraphrase some of these in order to avoid confusion. The minutes should include the kind of meeting, regular or special, the name of the assembly, in this case, would be Lowell City Council, the date and time of the meeting, where the minutes of the last meeting approved, as written or approved as corrected, who presided over the meeting, who served as secretary, who was present, what motions were made, how each motion was disposed of, were there any secondary motions, fix time, recess, suspend, et cetera, notices of motions in the case of the motion to rescind, that's required, all points of order, all appeals and all rulings of the chair, the hour of adjournment, and sometimes a committee report may be added to show legislative history, but that is only at the order of the assembly. The notion that all debate, dialogue, and public comment needs to be recorded in the Minutes has no merit at all. In fact, trying to conclude such items often causes confusion due to the difficulty involved in recording such dialogue. Minutes are a record of the actions taken at a meeting, not a record of what was said. Audio and video recordings serve the purpose of providing the detail of what was said, if and when those details are required. Thank you.
Sir, I might ask you, Mr. Wright, as basically our in-house parliamentarian, would you say that we have met those requirements?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Committee reports, Mr. Keith Williams, Parks?
Yes, the Parks Committee met Thursday, shortly. Basically, just, we all got together and we were signing thank you cards for all the volunteers, all the individuals and businesses, you know, helping out in the groundbreaking of the park. It was a great success, and, you know, we just wanted to show our appreciation. We didn't discuss any business, we just met, just to sign the cards.
Thank you, sir. With that, we do not have any old business, new business. Would be a moratorium exemption by Morrison-Chipley Engineering.
Good evening, I'm Heather Robinson with Morrison-Chipley Engineering. And the owners of Lot 1 in the Lowell industrial park are proposing to build a third warehouse on the site. There are two existing warehouses on the northern portion of this property, are proposing a 152,000 square foot warehouse. The property's located just south of Puppy Creek, and they would like to hook up to the city sewer, which is nearby. And in order to do that, we're requesting a moratorium exemption. I met with Rick Pulverani, we actually on this project pulled water history for the existing facilities, and then used that to come up with a peak flow. And there should be a letter in your packet stating that this is equivalent to 1.16 residential tax. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
We are standard procedures, have a public, Ms. Heather. So if anyone from the public would like to address this particular item, please come forward and state your name for the record.
Ronnie Breland, 119 South Brandon. Last night, the planning commission question was asked about the green, or the blue, kind of containers out there at AERT, and the mayor made a comment that they could just shut AERT down. So, mayor, you might want to look at that, and see what you might meant by that.
With all variety of visual aids that we have, and the money we spend, and the requirement that they provide information on a desk, why haven't we got a map to silver council in the city residents, where this is going to be, and what it's going to be? As I understand it, it's a warehouse. Does not, this lot have an address on a street? As it's in the city of Lowell, I would imagine it does have an address. If we would ask the building inspector from the fire department, the fire service, we should be able to get one. If not, we should be able to get one from the 911 office. We have never had any visual thing for us in the audience to see what the city is doing, what is being built in our city. We find out about it after the fact.
I hate to admit that we also found out some of those things after fact, as Mr. Don Harkin brought to our attention last night. There have been some large silos built on, not this property, but an adjacent property, but that doesn't pertain to this particular property. But just to address Mr. Breland's comments, I did not say that AERT should be shut down. We made the statement that I felt like the projects that they've done without building permits, without coming through the planning process, through the large scale, that indeed those, though, should be shut down, because they need to come through the same process, as I said, the PTO people need to. So, I hope that is clarified, that we did not make the statement, AERT should be shut down. So with that, any other bodies of yours from the public like to address this comment at this time? Okay, with that, we're going to close the public forum on this item. Ms. Heather, if you would, come back up, so if anyone has any questions for you. Anybody questions for Ms. Heather? Just to clarify.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the taps necessary for this project.
Grant the sewer moratorium exemption, okay. Mr. Moore has made the motion to grant exemption, seconded by Mr. Wright. Comments or discussion on this item? Ms. Lathan?
What are we studying at tax right now?
Um...
I think we're about 30. I think we're around at 30.
I think that's correct. We talked about that at the Tucker meeting, I think it was 25 to 30.
Close within that ballpark.
In the last three weeks or less, months or so, we haven't given anything away.
That's correct.
We're beginning first.
Yes, ma'am. That's correct. And just bear in mind, if this is a good point to tell you, it doesn't relate to the project, but a notice to proceed has been issued to the winner of the Puppy Creek Intercepter Line. They have 280 days in order to complete that substantial completion, which means it's in operation. And so, about June or July of next year, that should be completed in construction. Ms. Solomon?
I think that that opens up our taps at that point, and they'd only be in that far away. I don't see this as being a hindrance. I think they also said that once they started on that, that they would start working with us, if people had more taps that they wanted to use than what we had in the bank, they said that they could look past that after they started on the project, so...
Anyone else? With that, we do have a motion to grant the exemption, properly seconded. Mr. Burke, would you call the roll on that, please? Yes, vote grants exemption.
Yes.
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 Motion carries, exemption is granted.
Thank you, y'all have a good evening.
Okay, with that, next item is a resolution authorizing the continued levy of the ad valorem tax. With that, yes, that, Ms. Mason, since you're sitting here.
This is something we do annually. We are required to do this annually in order to collect our county turnback taxes. This is the same wording as the previous years, just changing the year of the tax and the year of the collection. If we don't have it to the county by November 1st, we don't get our county turnback taxes.
Any questions, anyone? Or is actually just open up the public to comment if they'd like to, too?
I think it is a shame to bring a tax thing to the council 13 days before, when I know that these are mailed out very early, so that we can do it. We know that it arrives this time every year. It has always arrived this time every year, and all. But yet, nobody has had the courtesy to bring it to the budget committee, to the personnel committee, or something like this. I think we should, at this time, table this motion, and I would like to see it in writing, that this will exempt, will make it so that we will not receive any turnback money from the county, and give just consideration to the firefighters and other city employees in their pension plans, so that they are adequately funded over a period of time. Because I have never seen, since I've been here, an audit of either, any of the lophy funds been distributed to the members of the council for their perusal, or anything like that. I think we should take this and, please, members of the council, consider your firefighters and your citizens, so that we don't get stuck with a big bill because of poor planning by our council.
Anyone else? Okay, with that, anyone have a question? Go on, Ms. Housman.
I would like to ask the fire chief to give his comments on whether he thinks that there should be a millage put on for the firemen's retirement, if he thinks there should not, and if so, I would like his reasons pro and con.
You want to restate that? I didn't hear everything.
(laughing). What I'm saying is, would you want a tax on there for the firemen's retirement?
Firemen's pension relief fund, both the old fund and lophy, are just where they should be right now. For any reports that should have gone to the council that shouldn't have, I can't be responsible for. The city does have a retirement board meeting that meets, in fact, we met last week, we're going to meet again this week. Our plans are over 100% funded.
So you do not see a need for a millage to be put on there?
What I'm saying is, it needs to be left just the way it is. It just needs to continue, because what's happening is doing the job.
That's what I wanted to know, thank you.
Chief, appreciate it. Let me say, every month in your monthly financial report, you receive a report of the lophy funds and those retirement funds. So every month, you receive that as a part of your packet. Okay, with that, anyone else? Sorry, you've already had your turn, Mr. Housman. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir, Mr. Solomon.
I'd like to adopt this resolution.
Second was by Mr. Moore, so Mr. Spurlock made that motion, seconded by Mr. Moore. Any comments, discussion on it? With that, roll call, Mr. Burke, yes, vote approves it.
Michael Solomon?
Yes.
Marleau?
Yes.
Wood Grant?
Yes, ma'am.
Ryan?
Yes.
Wood Grant?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Murray Housman?
Yes.
Darren Brown?
Yes.
Motion carries, the resolution is adopted. That will be a resolution authorizing the rate of property tax for the city of Lowell, Arkansas, for the year 2006 to be collected in 2007.
Number 0627.
Thank you. With that, Ms. Solomon?
Yes, we need to move that we move our next city council meeting back a week.
Do you have a motion to move from, what, November 7th? I assume to...
November 14th. And probably also the 20, 28th, I think it is.
Just for the public here, Mr. Solomon's requesting we move our November 7th city council meeting, which is election day, back to the 14th. And then we will also have another one on the 21st, which is the third... we will also have another one on the 21st, which is the third Tuesday.
I might, I might move that we move it, vote back a week, to the 14th and the 28th.
Okay, well- Well, we- Is the 21st a specific date of some sort?
The runoff, the runoff election, I think, is the 28th. The regular council meeting in November would be the first and the third, right?
And I ask this before we make another, combine both of these into one meeting, perhaps do it on the 16th, and that way we free up Thanksgiving week also. I don't remember, Mr. Carnahan is not here, but there's only a couple of items, I believe, from the planning commission in that, right? Uh, so, I don't foresee a large agenda at the next, uh, meeting. I'm just saying, if we could do it to Thursday, the 16th, that way we get it away from the 7th, we, we move, uh, the 21st forward up to the 16th, and that way we free up Thanksgiving week, if that's a concern. One meeting in the month of November on the 16th.
November, uh, Wednesday? Sixteenth, that's one of them, okay. Are you going to just have one meeting in November, or are you still going to have one on the 6th?
I'll call for that, just be one meeting in December, or in November.
That sounds good.
So the motion is to set, uh, both city council meetings in November to November 16th?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Moore, so just to clarify to everyone, we are, we are, uh, postponing the meeting on the 7th of November to the 16th. We're moving the one from 21st forward to the 16th, combining to one city council meeting on November 16th, Thursday night.
Seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock, yes, sir, standard time. Motion probably-
Go ahead.
Probably made and seconded, comments?
No comments, I was, my brain was moving faster than what, uh-
Okay, with that, we will, uh, just say if there's, if there are any objections to that, we'll just say by unanimous, see if that has done so. Okay? Seeing no objection unanimously, unanimously, uh, consented to. Latham?
Where are we on our budget process, when it's due?
We are, uh, trying to get to that point, and in fact, I've talked briefly with Mrs. Spurlock, and I have some discussion here. Uh, we just, we just replaced, uh, Ms. Mason's assistant a week ago, she's been on board one week. The auditor just arrived two weeks ago, a week and a half ago. Uh, we are, we're just finishing up the referendum period on our fifth district. Um, my request would be that we waive the requirements of the budget ordinance for the 15th of October, and delay that by 30 days, would be my request to do so, it's not on the agenda if we want to amend it, to consider that tonight, while we certainly-
Go move.
So Mr. Spurlock has made a motion to do so.
When's it going to be?
We'll delay the, we'll delay the requirements of the ordinance by 30 days. I forget what the 15th was, if it was a first draft through the mayor, or first draft through council. We'll go ahead to correspond with the next scheduled meeting on the 16th. Right. Thirty-one days.
They say in the book that he has on his desk what we were supposed to be doing by the 15th, so we'll know exactly what it is we're not doing.
Latham?
I'll come back.
Thank you.
I want to, if, if you think that, is that in the council rules document?
Mm-hmm.
It's not going to be codified, it won't be in my-
I thought it was codified.
It didn't change that part, so it should be-
We never did change-
I think it's there.
Ms. Latham, uh, 2 des 305, we have dates for the budget timeline, following timeline is recommended. October 1st, the mayor projects revenue available for the following year. October the 15th, division department directors, little proposed detailed budget to the mayor for review, including all salary and capital expenditures, budget committees and states, for work sessions in October. November 15th, the mayor delivers a budget draft to the city council. November 20th, the budget committee begins special work sessions. And December 2nd, uh, target date for the adoption of the budget. December, December 2nd, oh, I'm sorry, it says December, open print, second city council meeting. That'd be the second meeting in December, uh, is the target date for the adoption of the budget. Okay, we're on target, we're, we're, just because of circumstance, I talked about a little, uh, behind that internally, but we're, we're, we're good from the 15th, and-
I would draw my own motion, thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Spurlock. I hadn't even think of October 15th as a hard line date.
If we're through discussing budget, I would like to discuss sewer, mitting, and ask Mr. Kicklock if he has that ordinance finished for us so we can meet.
Um, I've drafted an ordinance for, um, with Ms. Carnahan, we've got drafts of ordinance for running a step system and for billing, uh, in draft form, also, I've got, um, some sewer system rules, just for Lowell, drafted, um, and as far as decision on the exact body that we'll use if we ever sell sewer, and if we ever sell step, I guess is what we'll sell, sooner than, than actual gravity sewer. Um, it won't take long to draft whatever body we decide to use, whether it's sanitary board, committee, or commission. Um, there's just an awful lot of confusion, even amongst the bond council, when they're asked, just what is, what do we have to have, what's required, what's permanent, what's temporary? Um, that, you know, I really want to put it to just, not just the committee when it's time, but also to the councils, to how they want to do that. Um, I don't think it's time. I don't think we still don't sell a drop of sewer anyway, whether it be step or gravity. And, um, when we do, I think we're going to start off awfully, awfully slow, awfully small. Um, so, it seems to me, and this is what I was going to say if we would have been able to, if we would have had that meeting, um, which I asked to be moved, by the way, that was my conflict, that first, that meeting we just missed, um, is, is what do we really think we need to do? We've got staff in place, what do we think we need to do as a, a body, what does the sewer committee think, committee of this council? And get your thoughts on, you know, what we're going to need to do management-wise. I'd like to hear what you all think about that, before I propose exactly which scheme we're going to use. I think we need to use one of them, that we've decided.
I thought we discussed that, but I'll be, you know, um, maybe we should meet again with you then, and-
I'd like to, yeah, Mike had that scheduled, and I asked that we moved that, I had a conflict about that, don't I?
Right, so, let's get back together then, and-
Yes, ma'am.
Because we've been delaying meeting, but waiting for you to get the ordinance you were going to-
Well, I don't think we need to, you don't have to create something to govern a system that you don't have. You know, if we don't have a sewer system. I don't think, do we?
Well, I guess when someone buys a house and wants to use the bathroom, we're going to have a sewer system, aren't we?
Well, I mean, I think Lowell, Lowell uses Rogers and Springdale, so-
No, I'm talking about the step system there.
Right, when, you know, and right now, that is, I think, been built by a developer.
And we've got some other problems sewer-wise that we should be discussing also, so, you know, I mean, there are mult, there are more than one thing that I think we need to get together and meet on. Would you agree, Mike?
I, I would agree, I, I think it would be okay, we haven't met in a long time, but I think we need to kind of stop our shoes and kind of figure out where we were, um, so that as you go and write those ordinances, you have the sewer committee's input. Also, um, just because I know that the council lets know while we're meeting, that, I know that there are some concerns in both Sabre Heights and in Daisy Circle with, um, failing septic tanks, and, uh, you know, uh, I think we need to, to start discussions on, you know, what the city's role will be at any day. So I would, I would ask that we meet, why don't we meet on the 9th?
November 9th, 9th, that would be okay.
Is that our view?
Yes.
Uh, 6:30? Never paid with you, Tom.
Is Wednesday the 15th, is that, I'm sorry, Wednesday the-
8th? That would be okay with me.
Wednesday the 8th, does that work?
Just to clarify to everyone- Billy's going to hate me for asking this, he's not even in here, good. Can Billy, can we ask code enforcement to be there, to somebody, Billy or Don, just somebody? Because I think, you have, you talk about failing septic tanks, you've got that law already on the books as far as code enforcement, and you want to talk to them about, you know, code, and you can't, you can't live in a place that doesn't have some kind of (inaudible) sewer system. You, that you've already got there when you've adopted your building code.
I have one more question, um, not pertaining to the sewer, uh, but Mr. Mayor, do you need any decision or assistance by, from the council in reference to this building that has, of these tanks, or whatever they were, to take place insofar as enforcement is concerned?
I don't think so, we actually just briefly discussed it last night and did not today, but they're in violation of our ordinances, I mean, they've not come through large scale, they've not applied for any building permits, so, I, I think Building Division has totally done their right just to stop any work and any, any, uh, use of any facilities that have been built without inspection, without permits, and so forth.
Okay.
I don't, I don't see anything else. Okay, I have nothing further.
I've adjourned.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, adjourned, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
We are adjourned.